...period and I have this little short statement to read. The decision expression period is the point of the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, in the county, and on what organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, has anyone signed up, Mr. Ernst?
Yeah.
We have no particular order, we just ask that you take turns speak and speak your business. Any acts will be considered after we close this expression. So with that, we are in a decision expression period. Anyone wishing to speak may do so.
And put this bloody thing on. Mike Rattuski, Nicholsville, Virginia, Scott County. I'm sure all of you know the situation on our southern border has completely collapsed. The administration of China Joe plans on pushing or busting these illegals all over the United States. These people have not been vetted, so we know absolutely nothing about their background. By allowing these people here in our county, we run the risk of putting the people of Scott County in danger. Don't get me wrong, I have nothing against people in the great United States. My great grandparents did it, they did it legally. The difference is the way they went about it. It was totally legal. John John Rich want to force these people on us and we need to stand up to them and say no. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak here in this expression?
Morning, I'm Frank Kimbler, Lenovo's Co., PDC. As very briefly wanted to report to you on a couple of projects we're considering for your consideration soon. For the second year in a row, appears there's going to be a second round of block grant funding deadline being in early November as we anticipated. We've had public hearings for a couple of projects. One is a resubmission of the Upper Cliff Mountain project. That's never been, I guess officially announced one way or the other, we're going to move assuming that we need to redo that one. And also, there's a small piece of a PSA project that actually is due to LMI status would be a very small, eligible for a very small block grant project. We've had the public hearings. I will be back here at your October meeting to give you more detail and have resolutions for your adoption, should those be ready to go at that time. I just want to make you aware at this point that I just thought I'd jump in here while I had it up too. Appreciate it, and I said I will see you in October.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll send those right now, I took them yesterday.
Thank you. Anyone else needing to speak? Anyone? Not we come out of decision expression period and Mr. Rattuski, we appreciate you coming. I think we're all concerned about our southern border and with the folks in Afghanistan, it's concern of all of us. And so, without being too political, I do question some of the decisions being made in this too, and I'm sure that most people in our county, they, that I talk to know they have the same feelings and thoughts as you do. Thank you for coming. For Mr. Kimbler, they, they have opened the bid for, for black gum and so it's a little bit higher than what they suspected, but hope they'll work through that and get that funded. So hopefully we'll have some good news here October 1st when Frank comes back. Anything else about this expression from anyone? All right, next item is item seven, Greg Smith, Town of Weber City. How you doing?
Yeah, just fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Well, for a meeting.
Can I remove my mask up here?
You might, yeah.
Thank you.
They'll probably hear you better too if you do, it's hard to talk though, so.
For those of y'all don't know me, I'm Greg Smith. I'm serving currently as the air mayor of Weber City. Hopefully we'll get to have an election in November, so we'll see how that goes. I'm here on behalf of the town council and town citizens to talk about two items. I've talked with Rita, I've talked with Bill, I've talked with Tammy in 911 on one of these, and I've talked with Daryl about it. The first item I want to talk to you about are the county 911 street signs. We have them all over the county, we have them in Weber City. I go all the way back to when Mr. Addington worked on this and set everything up back in 2003 and 2004, so giving away my age a little bit. Way I understand it, and I think the type of work that backed us up would be the county bought the signs, county installed the signs, and the majority of the county, they maintain the signs. For some reason in Weber City, they're telling us we have to maintain the signs. Probably don't know, but most of the streets in Weber City are VDOT owned. Another large portion are private streets, and then there's a small portion that the town actually owns. So most of the signs are on either VDOT right of way or they're on private property. There's like say, there's maybe dozens of streets that the town actually owns. And what I would like to let you all consider is, why can't we get our signs maintained like the rest of the county? I don't understand, even after talking with the staff, I just don't get it. They have a person I think works part-time that...
He does.
Yep, that does that. Most of our signs on our streets, if they do get damaged or knocked down, it's not going to be a great number per year because they're some very far side streets.
Right.
The ones that get damaged the most are the ones on VDOT property. So I would like for you all to consider letting everybody in the county sharing the same success of that person that does the part-time sign maintenance. I understand the county has a special tool it takes to put a new sign up, which is fairly expensive, and town does not have that. Town Weber City does not have a public works department, so we have no people to do that. We only have four police officers and one town clerk. I think the town of our police officers are better served doing their job. And I'm sure my town clerk doesn't want to go out and do it either. We've had a few, I guess councilmen go out in the past and try to put some of them up. That didn't work out real well, because again, they don't, they don't have the special tool to put that's, there's a thing you have to put in the ground for it to stand on and all that. So I would like for you all to consider keeping us as part of the county and letting the part-time person maintain whatever signs need to be maintained in the town.
Do you have any idea what the cost is to do that, what it's costing to replace the signs that are damaged, or do we have any idea for you what it's costing?
I really don't know.
I don't know that.
Tammy at 911 would probably have those kind of numbers. There's not a lot, you know, I mean occasionally a big truck will take out a sign on a tight corner or something. You're probably looking at damages maybe four or five a year, maybe one or two gets knocked completely down during the year. It's not a lot, but we just don't have personnel, we don't have the tool. So that's something I would want, I want you all to talk about and consider and see if it can't be done, because I was talking with Tammy and she was telling me about there's a particular one out in the county, she named it out on here today, but she said because of the name on the sign, people tend to steal it because it's a very popular sign.
We have an issue with devil's bathtub signs too, one people, I guess these college kids want them for their dorm or something, but they were kind of popular for a while, not as much now, but we did have an issue for a while trying to keep those signs up, so.
Sure. So, you know, you have people already doing the work and going out there and doing it, you know, for the entire county.
Right.
So I'd like for you all to decide whether, you know, Weber City can fit that same service.
Well, one thing that in the research that was done, that it was understood, and I, and I haven't seen this, but from what we've, that the sign would be put in place by the county, that their act would be maintained by the town. And I don't know, is that your understanding, that I mean, that's devil's block the...
The ordinance doesn't say that. It says all road name signs shall be procured and installed by the county. That's all it says, unless I'm overlooking, one of the staff provided me with that right there, so I could look at it and see. And I don't remember ever discussing that with Tim Addington back in 2003 and 2004. I was mayor at that time. We had to rename a lot of streets because of some...
Overlapping.
Overlapping and so forth, but I don't know if we ever talked about maintaining, because, you know, we were all getting into the mode of getting the new ones and getting them up. So I don't think that the maintenance was ever incurred.
Do you have anything in writing on that, Rita, that was...
There was a letter dated March 23rd, 2005, to Joe Rita Smith, that went into the details about the maintaining of the signs. And it said the town is to provide maintenance, including fabrication costs, and provide installation of signs to enhance 911 specifications after initial signage installation of all other signs.
Were you aware of that?
Did you have that in your packet?
I have not seen that letter. All I can say is why would one town have to do it, not the rest of the county? Who's maintaining the signs? Who's going to maintain the signs up in the non-town part of the county?
I'm sure the county does, but, but again, I mean, is it the other towns, is the same thing with them too, with the...
Gate City maintains their signs.
What about the other towns?
I'm not sure about Dunyanon or Nicholsville, I don't know.
Now, Gate City would have a public works department, so they would have the personnel to do that. The rest of us, I don't think, have that ability.
Well, that concerns me more, having the manpower to do it and having the right people to do it, more than the cost of it, and the cost of the signs, probably be that much maybe the poll or the sign itself would be a little bit costly, but the people doing it, you know, if you don't have manpower to do that. But you all still, you're on the board, how you want to handle this and your thoughts on it.
I think we need to find out if Dunyanon, Nicholsville, Duffield, Clinchport, all the other towns, how that's been handled or things. It should be handled, same across the county.
Yeah, I agree.
It's my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, we need to be uniform with this, so everybody, like you said, Gate City has a public works and you all don't, and I understand that too. But there's always a safety concern about working south of the road, you know, the guy got killed, but the campaign sign up, the Kingsport driver killed him after he was out there doing that, he's putting up a campaign sign, which it's hard to control something, what he went through, but still, if you're out there doing that, and, and the safety aspect of it too, you should carry some weight as far as having the right people doing those type of jobs that, you know, that don't have the proper reflective stuff or whatever, it would be a concern.
Absolutely, yeah.
Has the town of Weber City ever had public works?
No. That's a dream of ours, but it's obviously several years away because of financial concerns. I mean, one of these days, we hope to have it, but it's not going to be in the near future.
Let's find out what the other towns are doing. We can't just single out Weber City and give them a break and not do it for everybody, you know, so that's my concern. I mean, it'd be a little cost, but multiplied times five, it's going to be a bigger cost, and so that's where I'm trying to come from with this.
Of course, yeah. That'd be the thing to do, yeah.
But I think you have a good, you have a good concern with it, I mean, you know, I really do, I think you have a very legitimate concern. But if the town went into disagreement like the letter she read, and maybe, I'm sorry you get a copy, you should have had a copy of that to know that we, that we do have something to go with, but we can change that if, if we, if the board deems it necessary to do that. And, but I do think you have a legitimate concern with it, but let's see what the other towns are doing. And it's no big hurry, I'm sure you can wait a month or so to get a decision from us as to how to handle this.
We've been talking about this for five or six months, I guess, or...
No, the month ain't going to hurt anything.
The month's not going to hurt.
Okay, all right.
The cost for post hardware is between, sign, post, and hardware is between $250 and $300 per sign.
Wow. Pretty expensive.
And I'll find out the answer to the other question about the other towns.
Well, we'll get back with you, we'll see where this shakes out.
Okay. And the other thing I, I want to talk to you all about, a few months ago, Town Weber City received a bill from the county for approximately $3,700 for inspection fees. And of course, that is for your inspections department here at the county. And we've gone through the, the numbers that county staff provided, we've looked at it, and I guess our biggest problem with this is we don't understand why we're getting a bill, since everybody in the county, including the citizens of the town, pay the same property tax rate. And we also don't understand why the people that are coming and applying for a permit to have the inspections department come out and do their, their job, why they're not actually paying the cost. And I know that's probably a little bit of a political decision, but as a cost accountant, by training, to me, everyone who creates the cost should be paid, and that would be the person or business that's applying for the permit. Yeah, I know that can be a little pricey, but that's part of doing construction, whatever you're needing permit for. I would like for you all to take a look at that and try to understand why we're getting a bill. I mean, there's a, there's a great analysis that I got from one of the staff members that showed the inspections department, all the revenue and costs, and it ends up in this particular year of being a deficit of about $59,000. It's a great analysis, I hope all of you have seen it. If you haven't, you need to take a look at it, hopefully you go out for every one of your departments. It shows everything that department's doing and gives you an idea of where they're going. At the bottom of the analysis is where they're allocating monies to the towns, and that I don't understand. Again, we all pay the same tax rate, so why, why aren't we all funding that out of the general fund? You're, you're in essence making the townspeople, Weber City and all the other towns, pay for this twice. The bulk of it comes out of the general fund, only about, I think it's about $14,000 of that $59,000 is coming from the towns. So why not just do it all from the general fund? Because we all, we all pay the same tax rate inside that little county line right there. We just don't understand why we're having to pay twice. And that's what happens, because if, if the town pays that bill, then we pass it on to the taxpayers in the town. So in essence, they're paying it twice. So...
How long has this been going on?
From what I can tell, it goes all the way back to 1973. And just because it's been going on since 1973, doesn't mean it's right. I think it's time we take a hard look at it, correct it, whatever means you all think needs to be done. I think, I think it should be put on the burden of the people getting the permit, because there's a lot of people in this county that never go and utilize the services of the inspections department by getting a permit and having them come out and check on something. They may go their whole life and never get a permit. The way it's being done right now, they're having to pay for it. So I think there's a better way, we just need to look at it and find it.
Yeah, I was looking here, this goes back to September the 18th, 1973, and it's the charge for operating cost of the building inspection department will be prorated to the various towns on the basis of the number that's issued within each town. I wonder why it was acceptable then?
I don't know, I have...
We were around, I was around then, but of course, that's been a long time ago, but forty-eight years, and so why they agreed to, I'm sure there was a reason for it and they accepted it. I wish I knew what it was.
Well, that's what I've been trying to find out since we've been talking about it. No one seems to know. Probably the only person that might even have a clue would be Barbara Edwards. I think maybe she was working at that time.
Probably wasn't, yeah.
I don't know if she would remember or have anything on it. I can't figure it out, yeah.
Mr. Menace, I think if it's, if the town is under 3,600 people, if they're over 3,600 people, they would have to have their own building official and do their own inspections.
Right.
So under 3,600 people is an extension for the town to have a building official, and the county can do their role, but it's charged the town for that service.
So if they were more than 3,600, they'd have to have their own building?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it could be, you know, why are they a town?
Right.
If the county's going to provide all the services?
Right.
So I guess that's part of the charter that they made to be a town.
That makes sense, I mean, if you're that large, then you should be able to do...
Fund your own.
Fund your own, and maybe this is prorated out to where, well, it says here, last fiscal year, 527 permits countywide and 33 everywhere in Weber City.
Right.
And so, and what Mr. Ding is saying here, I, that's a pretty good analysis of just why it is the way it is, but I'm sure there's a reason. Just to show you how legacy thing happens, like, we tried to do some stuff at the park up here. In 1978, it was bought with grant money, and we were going to give Gate City a half acre for a water tower, and we couldn't.
Right.
Because of this legacy thing, where it happened in 1978, and we were within a half an hour, signed everything over, and the, of course, we got water, it was a win-win for everybody, but we couldn't do it because of what happened in 1978. So these things happened back then, and I'm sure at the time, it was a sound good ideal, but then, and things changed, I grant that, things changed.
Absolutely.
So anyway, I mean, you're, you are a town and there's, and you have, you know, you're a corporate, you have taxes that you collect, so as far as this, I mean, I don't think myself it's unreasonable, but you know, the board here may, may differ with me on the $3,600 that the town would have to pay for this, for the service that the county's providing. You all still, you're on the board.
I think we need to, rather than making a decision today, we need to do more research on it, because obviously the decision that went into play many years ago, they, they put thought into it totally, but we need to take the time to figure that out before we make a big decision today.
I agree with that.
That's my thought.
I just wish they documented what their reasoning was in, in this paperwork.
I understand.
Because I, I know, well, you, Sarah Lee, folks that were participating then, very smart individuals, but for whatever reason, they did document it, and we have no idea what they were thinking.
Right.
You can see how small an amount it would be for any of the towns really to do it themselves.
Right.
I mean, even Gate City don't have that anymore than we do. And then the smaller towns have even less, so they couldn't do anything. I mean, the fact of having one department for the county is a good idea, but again, all the money comes from the general fund, and to me, that would be the second way you'd want to do it. I still think the first way is let the permit applicants pay the cost. And that way, all the other people in the county are not being charged for what they need to have.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a, you know, good idea, but I, I think too, that we have to give time, we have to give ourselves time, you know, to study that, to think that out, and make sure that we don't infringe on what Bill was talking about, you know, the, the charges, you know, of township versus the county, that type of thing.
Are the other towns paying this, as far as you know, they're paying it?
Yes.
So like I said, again, you know, the, the towns that are incorporated, I guess the Clinchport's still incorporated too, but anyway, you know, it's, it's just one issue that you have, but we got these other towns to be, they'll do the same thing, so we can add up, you know, Gate City or Duffield or Nicholsville wherever, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
At the time, the minutes have a resolution that was sent to each town, I don't know if this will help much, but the establishment of the building inspection department shall be a joint project of the county of Scott and the towns of Clinchport, Duffield, Dunyanon, Nicholsville, Gate City, and Weber City. All expenses and benefits of the department shall be prorated and or distributed among the various participating political subdivisions on a percentage basis, based on a number of permits issued in each political subdivision compared to the total number of permits issued in all participating political subdivisions. All required inspections shall be the responsibility of the Scott County Department of Inspections, and all parties to this agreement shall share in all expenses and benefits of the program. Fees will be collected and permits issued by the Scott County Department of Inspections, all records of permits and fees shall be duplicated and forwarded to the political subdivision in which the construction site is located, so each local government can maintain such records. The building official and his deputies shall be employees of the Scott County Board of Supervisors. All salaries and expenses of the Department of Inspections will be paid by the Scott County Board of Supervisors, and each participating political subdivision will be billed for its prorated share of the operating expenses beginning with the period beginning November 1st, 1973.
My personal thoughts is we don't touch it, leave it as is. And I know this, and $3,600 is not a big deal for the county, but it may be for Weber City.
It is.
And it is, and no doubt, but when, when you multiply that times all the other localities we have, it would be a bigger burden on the county, so anyway, I think that was put in place for a reason, and pretty good wording of it, sounds like to me, but I think we should sleep alone. You all still, sir?
Well, I stick with what I said. You, you said earlier that you pass it on to, you know, the business or, or the customer, and so...
We're passing it on to the taxpayers.
Exactly.
The town, who are also the county taxpayers.
I agree.
So they're way up wise.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think we just need to research this, you know, a little more in depth, and this, this is the first, you know, this just got whipped on us, so...
Right.
Before we make a decision today, that's just my thoughts.
One more question for Greg and maybe Sally. Marshall, you're right, but couldn't, Greg, couldn't you pass these costs on to the property owners or building owners that are getting these permits? Could you do that instead of the county?
Well, in essence, we do, because if we pay the bill to the county, that gets put into all of our expenses, which gets put into our real estate tax. So in essence, we are passing it through, and then they're also paying the county's real estate tax, so they're paying for it twice in that regard. That, that's what bothers me, is that they're having to pay twice in all the towns. Obviously, I'm representing Weber City, but I would think the other towns would, would have to agree. And then, a lot of the people in the county are not having to pay the same amount. And we just need to find a good, ethical way to keep everybody hold and paying, you know, hopefully the same amount in taxes.
Well, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, but if you live in a town or a city, you know, you're subject to the taxes there as, as well as the county.
Right.
Versus, you know, a person maybe just living out in the rural area in the county. And that's a person's choice to be able to live in either one of those places, so.
Well, we have, obviously, you know, certain services in the town that make up, that we give the funding through making up our tax, taxes that we build to our, our citizens. And, you know, that's the extra things that they live in the town for, like garbage pickup, extra police protection, street lights, those kind of things. This is, this is something, it's countywide, and your inspection department does a very good job. I utilize them quite often, because I have property both inside the towns and outside the towns, and I get the same good level of service from the inspections department. And I get the same good level of service from the inspections department, you know, whatever piece of property we're, we're talking about that day. But it, it, you know, the cost shouldn't be, it's not an extra thing, it's towns doing. Now, if we ever do get to the ability to where we can have our own inspector, then that would, yes, that would have to be included in our tax base, like the street lights and police and so forth. But this is a countywide thing. It's already in the general fund, which you all sent out your property tax tickets here coming up in the next month or two. It just don't, it just don't seem right. You all bill us and we have to pass it on to our taxpayers again. I don't know if I'm making myself very clear, but if someone in the town, they pay their Scott County taxpayer, then they have to pay a Weber City tax bill that includes some of the Scott County costs. I mean, that's, this is the way the accounting flows. And I think there's a better way. I think we need to find it.
Sally, in summary, what you read to us, can you just in summary?
It was a joint effort.
A joint effort, okay.
Among the towns and the county.
At the time?
At the time, to start the building inspection department and agreed that that's how it would be.
Well, it was a great idea. I'm glad they did it. I don't, I just don't understand why. What you read, I've got here in front of me, it doesn't say, it says what they're going to do, it just doesn't say why. Yeah, I don't know if they really thought about that pro-rata formula that they, that put in there. It doesn't seem to be fair to one section of the county versus the other section of the county. Seems like they're, they were penalizing the towns, all of them, not just Weber City, all the towns versus the rest of the county. And I, that's what I don't understand. I think we need to figure out a better way.
Yeah, I agree, but I mean, I, I go, I go with what Bill said, you know, also, we have to. There had to be some thought, you know, that went into the county versus the townships and so forth and cities, you know.
Well, sure.
According to your, your charters, you know, how it's set up, so.
We'll see if we were like, as example Norton, we would have to have our own inspector, our own inspection department, pay all those expenses and pass those on to the taxpayers. But we're kind of doing it twice here in Scott County, because we, we don't have any cities in Scott County. All, all we have is towns and the rural.
Well, even in Norton, they would pay, they're still going to pay if they had double, because if they're paying county taxes, they're still paying to fund that building inspection person. And then if they're paying, if they're paying for either city taxes, they're actually paying more, because they're paying for that per, they're paying for that kind of.
I'm not sure if they pay wise county taxes, or whatever county they're in.
I would assume they would, but I mean, I could be wrong, obviously.
But you've got to be, is it five thousand people to be an actual city?
Five thousand.
In Virginia. And of course, as Bill said, you have to thirty-six hundred to meet that exemption.
Well, how many is in, how many, what is your population in Scott, area in Weber City?
Sixteen hundred. So, we're, we're not even close. In fact, I don't think any of the towns are close. I think Gate City, I think they're twenty-two, twenty-three hundred, maybe twenty-four, something like that. So, none of us are really close enough to where we could, you know, get away from that exemption. It's a good idea to have it all in one, I think. But we need to get the, the cost done the proper way. And I, to me, I would recommend to you all that you consider putting the cost on the applicant for the permit. And that way, everybody else in the county is held, you know, okay. They're not having to pay for something, a service they're not getting to use.
Is it that how Dungannon does it? Doesn't the town send those people a bill for the permits they get in the town? The town does it? The town bills their residents?
I guess the towns could do that, but that seems like a lot of extra work when we could do it in a central way. When someone comes in to the inspections department, just have them pay right there on the spot for whatever they're applying for, electrical permit, sewage permit, et cetera. And you all, you all wouldn't have to be billing the towns, the towns wouldn't have to be billing the people. The cost would be absorbed by the people that are actually creating the cost, the ones doing the permits, requesting permits.
Other, other counties, do they use this procedure? I mean, will they ever benchmarked?
Yeah, me, I could answer that for you, being lead county. If I go to go get the permit, I have to pay for the permit.
Okay. Maybe we should look into this.
The thing about this, we can't make an exception just for Weber City, the signage thing and plus this too.
I want you to.
Yeah, and, and we can't. We can't just, you know, pick and choose winners and losers. And so, anyway, again, with this amount here, thirty-six hundred dollars, if you look at all the other town, Gate City, probably a lot more than that. And so, when you add all that up, it, it's, it's more than just the thirty-six hundred dollars. So, anyway, I think the language and that ordinance that was put in place in nineteen-seventy-three was well worded. They had a reason for it, and I don't think that going through the ordinance thing again, we'd have to do that. And I don't think we should. I believe that was, well, they had the reasons for it. I trust them. So, we should leave it in place and leave it as is. I know it may be a hardship on Weber City. It's probably a hardship on the other towns too, to do that. But anyway, there was a reason, the reason for that. They were all in agreement. And so, they agreed for a reason. The towns agreed to it. So, anyway, they come together and they come up with that, and I think that me speaking, I'm number one of, just one of seven, that we leave it in place. My thoughts, you all can.
I mean, I would add that, you know, maybe you reach out to the other towns to see how they're handling that.
That could be easily done, obviously, if there's not that many of us.
Right. I mean, you know, see, because she said Dungannon, they, they send theirs out to their, they do, they handle their own. So, that would be, in my opinion, a good option, you know, that a way to you're putting the burden back on, like you said, putting the burden back on the user of that service instead of sharing it. I mean, uh.
The other thing about that is you're just creating extra paperwork where you could stop it. Out here in, in this building, when they come in and apply for their permit, they pay the entire cost like this gentleman was talking about in Lake County. And that way, the counties, the county people wouldn't have to bill the towns, and then the towns wouldn't have to bill the people. You know, it's just extra steps that could be avoided if, if the inspections department just collected it out here.
Now, I would have these bills to add that to the building permit holder, to add it to their cost, just add that, whatever it is. But see, we don't really know the cost, you don't know how many it's going to be. You don't know what the cost would be.
I think something about like, just permit fees. I know that our permit fees haven't been adjusted and we're still the price they were when I was building official in two thousand and one.
Right.
So, and I think that was way before that, like, electric permit is twenty bucks. You know, that doesn't even come close to paying for the inspection process. And those are, those are outdated, no doubt. I agree with Mr. Smith that you could offset the cost of the building department by adjusting the building fees or building permit fees. But I think that's not the ordinance.
I think so. I'm not sure about that, at least by resolution.
And maybe go by year by year, the historical number is what it was last year, so we're adding, we're doing the math. Say we do thirty-three, you know, last year, may do that many this year, and every year adjusted up and down on a percentage basis is what he, how much time he's there and what his cost to have him there. And add, add it to the individual's permit fee rather than spread that over, you know, everybody, so.
For example, Mr. Man, when I was building fish in two thousand and one, I think a health department permit fee was thirty-five dollars to get your set to clip that, and now it's over three hundred dollars. So, they, you know, the state has adjusted those based on their cost of operations.
Right.
We'd probably need to adjust ours, and then it wouldn't be such a deficit for trying to run the inspection department.
Absolutely. I think it's long overdue, especially after what Bill has said. As long as I've been around, the permit fee has been very low. They don't even cover the cost of your inspector coming out to, to do the job. So, if somebody here in the county would need my help, again, I'm a cost accountant by training. I did it for A E P for many years, so we could work out, you know, maybe what, what all you all would need to actually be charging the folks. And again, I, I have some in the county and I have some in the towns. And your inspector does a good job.
We'll look at it, and all this may be well worth the conversation to get, you know, things in, in the right culture where it should be, so. We'll look at and see if they make any promises to you, you know, we can, we'll, we'll look at and see what we can do differently to, where it won't be such a burden on any, any of the incorporated towns.
Well, this was set up in seventy-three. It's now twenty-twenty-one. I think we need to.
Forty-eight years, yeah.
I agree. I, I have concerns about all rules and laws on the books that need to be looked at. Maybe county looks like county needs to look at it, and I know the state does.
And the towns do too.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you coming.
Okay. I thank you all for listening and we'll see how it goes.
All right. Take care. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Next item is item eight, is the E nine-one-one Operations Medical Director. You have the information there about that. I don't know this Dr. Phillips and Greg, if you want to talk about, we have a friend of us have it here, about him being Operations Medical Director. We have to have that to oversee the medical, emergency medical dispatch stuff that's going to be happening. So, if you want to discuss that, tell us any more about it.
It's an agreement with Dr. Paul Phillips. He has agreed to serve as the Scott County Operational Medical Director for the new Emergency Medical Dispatch that will soon be available to the county. And he is doing this as a volunteer with no cost to the county. So, I just need authorization to sign the agreement. You have that in the packet.
I say it in this book. All right, we need to authorize this and that's the thing that will be happening with our nine-one-one people. And so, need a motion to authorize Mr. Aron to sign that agreement. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Grubbe's second. Any discussion? On the paper, both say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is the MUNA software purchase that is, is happening. Again, Mr. Starn, if you want to discuss that, you know, with what we have.
I sent you some information by email on the MUNA software, and in that email, I said we would ratify it at the September meeting. We will use CARES Act funding, three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, and American Rescue Funds at six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand for that purchase for the software and the hardware. So, we just need formal authorization for that purchase.
All right. Any discussion? Do I entertain a motion to authorize these amounts? Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Grubbe made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Wood's second. Any discussion? On the paper, both say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is the Equalization Board. It'll be a biggie in the county we've got to deal with. I talked to some people and I have trouble finding anyone who wants to serve on that, so. Do you want to discuss this with us anymore, Ms. Kegley?
We need at least eight names to get to the judge to appoint six.
And we have to do that in October, correct, at the October meeting to give to him?
Yes, six and two alternates.
Give me a name, she had it.
One and an alternate, is what I've heard.
Say again?
I have heard one name and one alter, alternate.
Okay. I have talked to some and I don't know, it's just, it's hard to get people to want to be involved in that, and so.
I had two that was interested, but with the schedule, they work. I mean, you know, Ms. Kegley sent out the schedule of what it looked like last time. There's no way a working person could do that.
Can we deviate from that schedule?
I think they set their schedule.
Like I said, they're, once they.
Yeah, but it's just to have enough time to accommodate the public to make appointments to see them. I think that was stretched from, what, March to May.
Yeah.
It could be condensed.
Yeah, we spoke with Ms. Dr. earlier this week. We met with her. And she thinks a two-month period would be more than sufficient, that this, this time last was just too much.
Right. Do you have a comment, Mr. Radowski?
I question, what is the equalizer, before I even, what is the equalization for?
Whenever the assessments are done, the company is doing that, if you get an assessment, you can go before them and, and question their decision on it. If you're not satisfied, then there's, this equalization board is put together by, and there's qualifications for that, by county residents, that will listen to your complaint, concern, or your grievance. They will listen to it and they can adjust whatever, you know, they, they may adjust it down, they may adjust it up. And they can adjust that and recommend it to the, to be changed, the, the assessed value can be changed according, you know, to, to that equalization board that they decide. But that, that's what it is. That's a good question. A lot of people maybe don't know that, but that's, that's what it is, just to make it the fair and equitable to everybody that wants their property assessed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brinkley.
I was going to tell you that I think you've got three people in your audience that would make excellent candidates. Mr. Radowski would be a great one. David Carter sitting back in the back. And if, if Greg's not left yet, if it wouldn't conflict with Greg's duties as mayor, Greg would make a, a great one. So, there's three people there, possibilities.
Yeah, good idea, yeah. Well, we need the names that people are wanting to serve and, you know, do that. It's a, it's not a big money-making venture for anyone. It's just something, if you want to be a part of making our county go, that's what it would be, you know, to, to do that.
But we can't keep going in the same direction we went the last time.
We cannot.
Because the last time, it didn't even pay for our, what it cost to have it done, so. We can't keep going the way we're going. You know, I, I don't like to pay higher taxes. I don't like to see that. But everything keeps going up. We can't just keep, the way I see it, we're twelve years behind right now. That's, that's, that's how I see it. And if we keep going in the same direction, if we can't find somebody to, to be on that board to, you know, and I'm not, I'm not saying be, you know, headstrong and strict, but be fair with everybody. You know, just, you know, and if you can't just lower somebody's just because they're complaining. You know, I'd like to say I'd lower too. But, and, and, and that's part of the problem. They might lower somebody's, but then they end up lowering everybody's. And it, you're, you, you basically not, you shouldn't even done the reassessment, because you stay the same. Everything is going to have to go up. We've got to bite the bullet sometime or another.
And they have to have justification on why they feel it was incorrect.
Yeah.
Not just come and say it's too much.
Right.
You have to have justification that something was done incorrectly with your assessment.
So, we, we have to, I've, I've got one person in mind. I, I've asked two or three, and I'm like you, and it's, and it is. And, and probably the ones that are turning this down should be on it.
Yep.
Because they, they truly understand.
So, I agree with you.
So, you know, we, we, we really have to be careful this time around, because we can't do the same thing that happened six years ago.
What are the qualifications, Sally, to be on? Do you have it before we, I don't want to blindside you with anything. Do you have it, or?
I just did. Hang on a second.
Well, what she's doing, you know, we're really fortunate to live in a county where we typically don't, the taxes are not raised, okay? And so, the, the assessment is a vehicle which that catches us up using fair market value. And whereas we don't have to raise taxes in our county, so if we're not having good tax assessments, and then if we don't have tax increases in our county, then guess where we're at? And whereas we don't have to raise taxes in our county, so if we're not having good tax assessments and if we don't have tax increases in our county, then guess where we're at?
You have it in your packet, item ten.
Okay.
It says all members have to be residents of the county and the majority, four, have to be pre-holders, which are landowners in the county. The statute says appointments shall be broadly representative of the community. Also thirty percent, which would be two, of the members have to be commercial or residential real estate appraisers. Other real estate professionals, builders, developers, or legal or financial professionals. And at least one such member shall sit in all cases involving commercial, industrial, or multifamily residential property unless waived by the taxpayer. To be eligible for appointment, each prospective member has to attend a basic course of instruction given by the Department of Taxation.
So some pretty good guidelines are to go by, and it's kind of tough guidelines to go by.
What, what did we say about changing the schedule? Is that possible or no? That is possible, okay.
The board, whenever they're selected, they'll set their own.
They set their own.
Okay.
Okay. So, so like, like the ones that you may have talked to or?
Yeah, but they work, so during the daytimes, you know, wouldn't work for them. And you can't do them all, I don't think you could get enough appointments after five, you know, to get it all done.
Is there compensation for sitting on this board?
There is, but I don't know how we determine that amount yet. I don't know how much per person. And then we'll also need to get a clerk for the board as well that takes the phone calls for appointments and sets those for the residents. And that's also a paid position, temporary position.
That's in addition to the?
Six.
The six.
Right, and I believe in the past, we've advertised for that in the paper, for applicants for that position.
Well, I think about advertising, the whole thing, throw it out there, you know, put in the start, immediately put in the paper. If somebody else might want to serve to meet some of the qualifications you just went over. To get people that qualify to be on it. And I know everybody knows, we met with the people doing those assessments, two of us had a time to be legal, we met. Let us know that it's going to go up. They showed some of the properties that are, have been assessed, they were so undervalued and they're going by the property that's selling. And the only area that is not depressed, but the Duganet area, but the rest of the county, the property that sells is going a lot, much higher than what it's assessed for. And they got to use those values to get the proper assessment in the surrounding, the properties surrounded. And that's what, and that's why they informed us that it's going to go, it's going to go up. That that of course telling us on the tax rate, with eighty cents to the, I thought maybe we could lower it some if it was too much. But we got to go six years before we do another one and trying to get enough made operate, that's where we are now. We have a one point seven million deficit this year, started with a three point two million, got to one point seven. And we can't keep operating like that. And so the costs are going to go up, talk to the lady in Russell County. To upgrade their courthouse, she said, look, maybe eighteen million dollars is going to be forced on them. At their courthouse to get, to meet what the state's going to require. If we split the courts here, a lot of the three judges that I met with on what's going to cost here to do what we got to do there. But all this, this cost is going to be pieced right back down. And the only source of revenue we have was, of course, sales tax and so on, you know, for the most part, you know, about half of our budget comes from real estate. So. These costs keeps going up, we got to operate the county, it's going to be tough whoever's on that board, but to try to, to be fair to the people coming before them to get the, the assessment. Done correctly and to be fair to those that's paying the bills. I'm not going to talk about taxes not being collected, it's another matter that's hard to deal with. Anyway, your thoughts, I was hoping where we go from here.
Can we put it in the paper as an advertisement? And say if you're interested? I mean, I don't.
If you're interested, call your supervisor.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, it's. You can't really, I mean, you could put it generally out there, but you can't, you know, put a whole lot of detail.
Right. It has to be one from each district?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
So broadly representative of the county. We just have to have, that's a change in the law since the last time, I think last time we had five. This time we have to have one for each, because we have six election districts, we have to have six on them, but not necessarily one for each.
All right, you folks at home.
Get the word out.
You folks at home, if you want to, if you would like, contact us. Please.
That's why we're having this discussion, right?
Well, hopefully, that's right, get it out there so people will know. So we want good quality people that's, that meets those requirements to serve.
The reassessment is almost complete, that's why, you know, you've been getting the emails from Ms. Kegley. And I say, oh, please, you know, this is important, we need to get this nailed down. Because right now they're just going back and doing things that have been flagged and getting those situated. And they'll soon be complete.
They're down humor right now.
I think it should be stated, Dr. Redwine used to say this, you know, you go down, if you wanted to sell your home or whatever and someone wants to buy your home. The first place that they go to is at the county office and find out what the value of the place is. And at that time, you want it to be the optimum value, you know, fair market value. And that's the whole purpose of the reassessment, is to have our properties, you know, at that value. So it's really a good thing for the county, you know, it may sound somewhat negative with that, it sounds like it's going to raise and things like that. Nobody really wants their taxes to raise. I think it's better said, we want it to be fair and equitable to everybody.
Let's do what Ms. Kegley said, to put something in the paper, a pretty big something, we sure that they see it. And if they can contact their supervisor or their district if they're interested.
I just happen to think of a name as I'm sitting here, so.
All right, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Do that? So let's go ahead and, do we need to authorize her to run that in the paper?
Yeah.
Need to most authorize Ms. Kegley to run this ad at her discretion, wording in the county paper, do we have a motion to do that?
Still moved.
Ms. Grubie made a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Tipton's second, all fair and proper saying aye? Aye, opposed, so you got your work cut up for you. Get some good people, Sally. It's on you.
It's up to you all to find them and talk, talk them into it.
I know, yeah. Yeah, I'm pleased.
You got the one name I gave you, it was pretty.
Yes, good job, Darrell.
Darrell showing us up now.
He had to throw that in there.
He had to throw it in there, I got mine done.
I just wanted to make sure it was her.
He's taking a pair of the ball.
I didn't get out and make the boochies again.
You know, all of us should have one, if we all had one name by next, next meeting, that would be.
We got it. We got to have, we need eight, we need to offer it, so.
I found you an alternate, so I've done enough for you.
Okay, all right.
I, I've got a name. And I'm pretty sure I can get them too. So if the rest of us could just find one.
I'm trying to steal one out of your district.
We'll compile the list.
It'd be hard to find a real estate person to do that number.
That's, that's where I've run into trouble.
I have some contacts, I'll reach out, I'll see if I can do my part for one.
Yeah, two of them would have to be.
Everybody reach, I'm who you are, if you know somebody that is a good candidate, reach out to them, I'm who you are. You don't have to be sitting up here. Or if you know someone, you know, David Carter, I mean, how about you?
Just think about it, just think about it.
I'll think about it, but folks, I think, in my opinion, the elephant in the room is, it don't matter how much the reassessment is, how much is approved. If it's not able to be collected by the office that is responsible for collecting the taxes, we're back at the same spot we're at, we're in now.
Yes.
If the tax rate is raised on your property and you don't pay it, and it's not collected or any attempt to be made to collect it, then will be the better option.
Thank you, that was absolutely perfectly put.
Well, that's a good, that's a very good point.
It's a very good point.
David said, you know, we still have our responsibility.
Yes.
We're one part of the team and it should be a team effort from
Yes.
all the entities of the county, and that's what we got, agree with you on what you said.
All right, you got your job assignments, so, class assignments, can't think of us. Item eleven, bar wise, if you would, Ms. Brinkley.
And if there's a grant opportunity coming, probably later this month. And it is for animal resistant cans. And I've compiled a list of areas in the county that we need these. Two for the park and golf course, one for the Little League field in Duffield. Two for Heath Memorial Park and one at the walking trail at the fruit drove building in Duffield. So a total of six. The cost for those, I've got three quotes. The cheapest was through the Virginia Correctional Enterprises, they actually make the cans. And singles would be a total of fifty-nine hundred, seventy-five dollars and seventy cents. And we would need to pay a match of thirty percent. But the match can also be supplies, labor, they have to be on a concrete path. So everyone who would install those, we can count their labor, we can count all the materials toward those paths and get them installed as part of our match. But if it was cash only, that match would be seventeen hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-one cents. And I'd like to ask you today if you would be in agreement for me to apply for this grant, if it does come available this month before our next meeting. And that you would stand behind the match, cash and in kind for the grant.
I think it's a good deal.
Ready to see any way we can get one for an auction gift.
I can talk to the Towne and Gate City.
I don't know where it's Gate City.
Gate City or Weber City and see, since that's not on county property. If they would pay the match.
This place is a mess down there, every time you go by, trash is scattered everywhere. Third and Fifth.
Is bar getting into it, that wasn't it?
It's a mess every time you go by.
It's got a trail up the bridge. That's usually a bar.
And we have two already at the Stummy Creek Park, we'll get those when we build the facility. And they've been working well as far as I know.
All right, we need to authorize her to go for this grant, I think it's a good idea, we need to do that. So do we have a motion to go for this bar, bar wise grant?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Hearn's second, any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Can we use Scott Service people as the in-kind labor?
I don't know, because you're not paying them anything. If our Public Works Department did, we could.
Well, they do, her milk and do eat all kinds of time.
Anthony and Randall installed the ones at Stummy Creek, so they're familiar with that process.
Scott Services will probably be helping Anthony. All righty, to the item twelve, Scott County telephone grant.
Mr. Fraser reached out to me, Mr. Franklin, about a project grant that they're applying for in September. And it is in the Lenoiscos footprint, it'll include all the Lenoiscos counties and city. It's a thirty million, thirty million dollar grant and they're needing matching funds for the grant. The CARES Act committee looked at their request and approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the grant. And I'm asking for you to consider using some of the American Rescue Plan funds for another portion of the match. If you would do a hundred and fifty thousand or whatever it would be your desire to do, that would be a total match of three hundred thousand for the grant. Scott County telephone has spent over thirty-three million dollars in Scott County since two thousand. They're a big presence in our county and I think if we could help them with this match, it would be a good thing. Their goal is to have fiber in every home in Scott County. And this grant will help them get to that goal.
Y'all serving on this committee, on this, on this CARES Act money and that American Rescue Recovery Grant, y'all have done real well with it. When you have a committee doing these things, I'm pretty much in agreement, when you put them on it, I trust them to do the right thing and this is coming from the committee. And so I recommend that we approve this.
And I have a letter of support, if you could authorize me to put that on letterhead, it's just for whatever amount your match is that we're supporting the grant and their endeavor for this project.
All right, and she's asking for authorization to submit these letters, do we have a motion to do that or do you want to discuss it more?
And also to move an additional match.
I say again?
I'll make the motion that we approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan.
Okay.
To.
Do we need to do them separately?
No, necessarily not.
Do them both then?
Okay, yeah.
And then authorize Ms. Darne to.
All right.
Sign the letter, write the letter.
Ms. Grubie made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Hearn's second, any discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify, so together we're talking about each of the one hundred and fifty thousands?
So it'd be three hundred thousand total match for the grant, just for two pots of money.
All fair and proper saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Scott, let's keep it, the same. Do you want to talk to her so we can hear you?
No.
All right.
She said no.
I'll have a letter on the phone, it's fine.
Please appropriate two hundred and twenty-two dollars to investigations, travel, trainees, three one two five zero dash five five forty. For reimbursement for seeking a positive in treasure office. Appropriate thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents to regional jail, frequent assignment, three three one zero zero dash five six three eight for reimbursement. Appropriate ten thousand dollars to tourism advertising, seven two six zero zero dash thirty, three six zero zero for COVID relief grant monies received. And appropriate forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-one cents to sheriff's vehicle replacement, three one two zero zero dash eight three zero one for reimbursement. And appropriate two thousand dollars to DHCD, CDGV, Lonesome Fund, Regional Industrial Development Authority, Opportunities, Optimizing Grant, Professional Services, eight one six one zero dash three one zero zero for reimbursement. That's all the appropriations.
Do we have a motion on appropriations as described by Ms. Victorius?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you've made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, good job. Next item is appointments, Ms. Tam.
You have one appointment for the authorities community, it's for your father. You have one applicant, Emily Dico Williams.
All right, do we have any nominations for the jury of the committee?
All nominated, Ms. Baker.
Any other nominations?
How many motion nominations, please, and both by affirmation.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bieber's second, any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, so. Item fifteen, Ms. Kegley, you have anything for us?
One thing about two items. Just need your authorization to advertise for two public hearings in October to update our criminal code ordinance and also our procurement ordinance to coincide with changes that the General Assembly made this year.
Okay. All right.
The request for the criminal code comes from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, mostly has to do with the marijuana laws that have changed.
Mostly has to do with the marijuana laws that have changed.
Okay. All right. Need a motion to authorize Ms. Cately to advertise these two public hearings? Do we have a motion to do so?
Sure.
All right. Mr. June made a motion. You second?
I'll second.
Mr. Krueger, second? All fair and proper saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
That's all I have. That's all my questions.
Thank you much. Next item is item sixteen. Our county administrator, Ms. Starnes.
The Jennifer Mallon after claims three million eight-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-forty dollars and ninety-nine cents. We have early claims this month that totaled three-hundred-thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. And the main reason for that total was the Martin's Peterbilt new packer truck that was two-hundred-thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. And we also paid the waste management invoice, forty-five thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and forty-three cents to keep from paying interest charges. So total early claims, three-hundred-thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. And on the packer truck, we will be getting that from Truist Bank, but the truck was ready for delivery, so we went ahead and paid for that upfront. And then we'll give the money back from Truist once the lump documents are finalized later this month. And then some of the larger claims, a lot of these are just first quarter payments. The big one was the regional jail. We've divided that into two payments for the first quarter. So this one was three-hundred-fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty dollars, sixty thousand dollars and forty-three cents. So that'll take care of the first quarter regional jail. So total claims for the month, including the early claims, is eight-hundred-five-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-seven, eight-hundred-five-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-seven dollars and eighteen cents.
I always like looking back on that bar graph, see where we're at last year, and the year before, and the year before. So anyway, we're 2019, we were two-point-nine, maybe we're three-point-eight now. So we're doing better than we were then.
And the difference between fiscal year 2021 and 2022, I believe, was around a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. So once we get that Truist money in for the packer truck, we'll be just pretty neck and neck. We'll be a little bit ahead for this year. So that's good this time of year, because this is always our lowest point, September and October.
Yep. Okay. Any comments or questions for Ms. Starnes on paying the bills? All right. Any motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You stood at second. Any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Anything else?
I do have a couple of things under miscellaneous.
Okay. Go ahead.
The first one is the Mack and Rescue Plan Act budget. When we had our CARES Act meeting, we just wanted some clarification. I feel like with the ARPA money, it would be good to set our budget and follow that with our request for expenditures. We are starting to get those in. Would it be the board's desire to continue with the committee that we have? Or would you rather change it up some to set that budget? My thought was to do a budget for the first allotment of funds and bring it to the full board for approval of that budget, and then the committee can work from there, just whatever is your all's wishes.
I think that'd be fine, but those on that committee, so you're on it and do it.
Jeremy and I.
Jeremy, yeah. I mean, y'all have served well, I've been on it over a year or so. Except you, if you think you want to take a break from it.
I think that's the best way to, what Frida was saying.
Yes.
We're coming up with a budget for, you know...
And we can do that.
And then, and then if you want us to still be on that committee, then whatever, we can do that too.
Well, the budget thing definitely, because anytime you have money like this, you need to budget it now, then the committee decide and make their decisions on it. But I guess my first thing, first, y'all still want to serve on it. I mean, except you, I know you've been pretty busy going in there, so.
I mean, if someone else wants to.
If somebody else wants to, that's fine.
Usually nobody else wants to. From my self experience, I always push you off on somebody else, but...
I mean...
I never thought it'd be so hard to get rid of money. We really had to watch everything. And it's, it's, but, but we have, we have been able to do a lot of good.
Y'all have done well.
It, it's, we've helped a lot of people in the county, the first responders.
Yes.
Small businesses.
Small businesses. Some of your nonprofits, you know, we, we were able to spread it around just as much as we possibly could, and we've still got just a little bit left. Not much, but a little bit. Of the first round.
Of the CARES money.
Yeah.
We all have served it well, and if you want to stay on it, you most certainly can. And you're knowledgeable about it, and Frida working with you, so if y'all want to.
I'm okay with that.
But do you, do you want to do it?
No. I almost used another word, "play no."
I'm glad you did. If y'all want to continue to serve on it, you can, but if you want to give it up too, I understand that you all have served it well, so.
I enjoy doing that.
But hats off to Frida, John, Bill. They're, they're the ones that's done the work.
The bulk of the...
I mean, you know, it's been, I, I don't see how they kept up with everything, but Sally, but...
Amy.
Amy, you know, everybody.
I think you've done great. You've done a great job.
I think so too.
Glad we had you.
But we still, we keep y'all there. You can get one brought back on, so if you want to serve, that's fine. One thing I'll say this before we get into talking about the budget part of it. I have to have got some money from the county, and I think this is the only county that did that. Whenever, do you remember anybody else that she went through that? We had to prove that.
But I was really pleased that, you know...
That Scott County came through for them, and so... Anyway, it was, what we did, the meeting by Zoom was last time, and it still went good. Anyway, they got the grant from Scott County, and they, and we had to prove that. And it was, I kind of felt good about our county that done it, but nothing from the other counties, not, maybe they have the reasons for it, but anyway. If there's any more from them, I didn't see it, just Scott County. All right. On the, the budget, do we need to do anything with that to...
Establish the budget.
We'll, we'll work on the budget, get that to you, and then the full board can approve the budget.
All right, that'd be good. And again, thank y'all for serving on this. It really is, it's good you're doing that.
And the next thing I have is the door for the sheriff's office. The door that's currently there is on its last legs. Hit the main door. It's been there.
Last hinge.
Yeah, exactly. It's been there since the building was built. So I've got a quote from Crystal Glass. We've actually got a couple of quotes. And Bill has worked with the sheriff's office, and this quote is for a sliding door, and they agree that's what they would like to go with. So the quote's for eleven-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. And I was wondering if you would want to use some of the ARPA money for that. Do you have some information on the door?
Just, just verbal.
Okay.
I couldn't find the video exactly for it. But what it is, if, if you look at the door down there, it's a double door, aluminum framed with side lights, like it's a, it's a big unit. It sits inside the brick. This would replace that. And instead of double doors that would swing, it would be a single sliding door that would react automatically and open up, which the sheriff's office likes that idea of being able to bring prisoners out, let that door open automatically, and then they're more of a security. And then, you know, as far as not being able to handle, or not having to handle the door more will help COVID issues as well. But it's aluminum framed door that just slides. It's not a double door like it was, but you go into two single doors anyway. So you're not losing capability of bringing big furniture in or anything like that, going to a single door.
You got more than one quote?
Name it.
More than one quote?
Yes, we have three, three quotes. Well, we have two quotes, two quotes, and then one response.
Those quotes, thirteen thousand.
All right.
We tried to repair the existing doors, and when we got into it, the hinges had been worn out. There's some steel inside the aluminum that was rusted. So it's pushing fifty years old, so it's going to do.
And the amount's eleven-thousand-one-sixty-four-fifty cents. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, because we're tax exempt.
All right, okay. All righty. And it would come from the, which fund?
The new款of money, the American Rescue Plan, if that's your desire. It would take a big chunk of our public works budget if we used it from there.
Okay.
Yeah, we should do that.
All righty. Do we have a motion to approve this for the, for the doors at the sheriff's office? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll clear.
Mr. Bieber, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
I have one, one more thing. Sorry.
All right.
In your packet, you have an agreement for E.H.L. Global Technologies. It's our new company incentive program for the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund. And I need authorization to sign that agreement. They are making a new capital investment of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars to build buildings. And a hundred and sixty new jobs.
They used to be Cal-Gerber's Opportunity Fund, isn't it? It used to be.
Yeah, it used to be Cal. The GOF kind of opportunity fund, that's the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. The NCIP is a new program out of the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund.
Right.
So it's a new country, Virginia, and then they're able to offer additional incentives. So this incentive is not given to them at one time. It's given to them over a six-year period once they meet their goal. And if they don't meet their employee goal, then they don't get that incentive. So it's distributed over time.
So we need to vote to authorize this to happen, correct?
For me to sign it.
Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
You stood at second. Any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Anything else?
That's all I know of right now.
All right. Y'all will take a quick break before Don comes. You want to go ahead and get through it?
Yes, please.
Let's take about five. You can take a break now, Mike.
I'm sorry?
You can take a break now.
Item seventeen, presentation by our EDA, ED, Executive Director, so Mr. John Tewor. I'll take this off so you can hear me, you can probably hear me through that, but.
Really clear for that, but.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and good to see Mike on the screen.
Great man, go on.
You're gonna turn these TVs on back here so they can see.
I can hear you, D.
We're getting these TVs on in the rear here so the rest of the board can see. All right. Can you see that? Again, good morning and had a, of course, great year. We've been working on a lot of things and I know Jeremy and Stephanie's already alluded to that on small business. But start with Timper's Ceeley Expansion. Of course, that's a sixteen point seven million expansion and that was announced by the governor in March. And the incentives on that with twenty-five jobs was a hundred and ten thousand from the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. A hundred thousand from Virginia Coquill Ignorant Development Authority. That's for workforce training and state and local enterprise zone incentives. So I'll come back to you for enterprise zone in the future to lead with that expansion that they're doing. This is the third expansion, major expansion that Timper's done at that facility. And I'll show you what they're doing. Let's not move it. I may not have that on. Right now. You got it on here, just a quick. So you can see the darker shaded area at the top of this is what they're expanding now. Timper is located on forty-three acres. If you go back and look at history, this was actually a site that was developed through the HCD grant back in the day. They developed this site along with the site in Douginn where the horse park is. And both of those sites, I think they got a million dollars for those. And part of the money was spent in Doug, and part of it was in Douginn. So think of the vision that they had back then to develop those, we want to have the things that we've had. Because if we didn't have this site, Timper would not have had a site to look to. Because they came looking for a building, but we had a site available. So they took all of forty-three acres on that site, all of it. So that's where they have actually built their facility and expanded it three times. Now also, Timper has two other buildings in Dougville. One, the former Buster Brown building, which is theirs, which is around fifty thousand square feet. They also have forty-three thousand square foot building beside Kamatsu. So they have a lot of real estate in Dougville, in the industrial plant. So here's a picture of that. This is a drawn picture of the facility. You can see on the left side of the picture what they're adding on. Interesting thing, if you used to fly years ago, when you used to fly Delta, you fly Cincinnati, you would always fly over this building. And you could see that footprint and you can just see it grow, but Delta don't fly there anymore. You have to go to Atlanta out of Tri-Cities. But you used to fly directly over this in Dougville. The other company that y'all already talked about is E Health. And of course, that was a new business announcement back in December. And that's a medical record retrieval and image solutions provider, customer support center. And there was some investment and they were creating a hundred and sixty new jobs. They're well on their way to meet that first year target. The first year target was a hundred and ten. And of course, they have till February next year to reach that, March, February, March next year. So they're well on their way to reach that target. And they continue to, you know, find regional people. They are satisfied with the people that are getting, they are getting here. And of course, their wage helps too. They were coming in at what the Virginia wanted to set their minimum wage at, so it's a really good wage. Of course, here's the sign on their door, they have a sign outside now of the building. E Health Technologies in a very secure area. It is, of course, if you need in that area, please call if you want to go visit. Because they have security steps, you have to sign in and everything. And I usually just call them and let them know or email them if I need one area. Even at maintenance goes in areas, so very secure. The other one is, of course, Riverside Development, Marge Design is, of course, our engineering firm. They're engaged to complete a masquerading plan. And the board approved that, the EDA board approved funding for the site for site development. It's five hundred thousand for Virginia Mac Mission and three hundred thousand from B C to B C to actually approve the funding for the masquerading plan. And what we'll do with that is look for additional funding. With the new funding through EDA, it's been proposed, we're going to work with Lenoisco and hopefully find additional money for that site, for the site development. And also, the opportunity zone should help in the enterprise zone designation as well. And the RIFA, the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, and Opportunity Zone Grant. We worked with Lenoisco and the HCD, have freedom idea on the RIFA board. And all RIFA partners participate in the process. So we came up with a prospectus, and that's what this is here, an investor. I won't pass that around. This is a marketing item that we can use to actually market to the opportunity zones. If you like, if you need a copy of it, we got more copies in the office. But each county is represented in there, each opportunity zone in those individual counties is represented. And we had an outside department do that. And of course, the grant funding came from the HCD. And so this one only highlights the Riverside Development. That's our only opportunity zone that's got county. So you won't see Dougville in there, you'll only see the Riverside. Dead over here. There we go. Okay, Daniel Beanwell, Trail and Turkey Center. Facility transferred to Department of Conservation and Recreation on July first. So they are the owners of that facility and they're the operator of that facility. And we continue to work with the Virginia Tourism Corporation on the marketing. We have received some marketing grants from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. That was early before this all transferred, so we better close those out. I guess in the future, they would work and get future grants for the Virginia Tourism Corporation. And again, it's open right now, Friday through Monday, ten to six. And hopefully get the COVID over and everything, they will open more, but that's how it is right now. Stoney Creek Devil's Bat, this is funding came through Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy. And Marge Design is now engaged, is working with Appalachian Conservation Corps. So we have to do environmental documentation, that's an NEPA document. So Marge Design will work with ACC on that. And we also have weekly, no, bi-weekly calls with DME on the project. And we also have the monthly calls with ACC as well on just the construction process. So budget estimate is two hundred and eight thousand. And they have created maps, ACC of the project, and they have been on site with Marge looking at the trail. So the trail area is a hundred and thirty-nine acres of Devil's Bat, that's the boundary. So they'll be doing that document, the environmental document for that.
They're gonna try to work on that trail, get it up there.
The trail, that's what ACC is going to do. So Marge is working on the environmental document once that's done. Then ACC will be able to go in and do the improvements on the trail and make it safer.
That trail is so primitive, I mean, if you're not in pretty good shape, you can't walk it. And I've walked it a couple of times and it's not easy.
Yeah, it's unsafe in a lot of places, you're right.
Well, some places are creek and the trail's the same.
Then the grants, I think Jeremy and Stephanie already talked about that. But bridging the gap was kind of the first grant out of the gate. We initially started as a loan, but we were able to convert those to grants. So that was forty thousand dollars. Also, the disaster recovery grant round one, two, and three. There was fifty-two applications received and approved for a total of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Then the nonprofits that they alluded to earlier. They had six applications in the first round and eleven applications in the second round. And that's for a total of eighty-five thousand dollars. So total for small business grants out of the Cares funding is over six hundred thousand, six hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen feet thick.
That's good, that's real good.
And that's affecting a lot of businesses that are struggling. And of course, they're still struggling. We know that, we see the signs of help warning, and they still struggle trying to find help and keep their employees. And they still struggle trying to find help and keep their employees. And this is not just a Scott County thing. It's regional. It's national. It's the employee shortage. And also we worked with Leno Whisco, freed an idea on the regional small business recovery assistance grant. And that was one point six million dollar grant to the LeWise and Scott Counties and the City of Norton. And these were one-time grants for small businesses up to fifteen thousand dollars. So regionally, they approved one point three million. And in Scott County, that was twenty-five business equated to two hundred and thirteen thousand five twelve forty-nine. That's in addition to those other grants. So that's eight hundred thousand if you're looking at the total. We have worked with Leno Whisco and hopefully we'll see some additional funding for another regional grant soon. But we don't have that in place yet, but we are working to try to get that in place. And also on small business, B CDA, Virginia Cokeville Economic Authority, still has a C cap of grant program. These are for small businesses. They have to be a qualifying business. They have to go through the process with the Small Business Development Center, have a business plan, and then they could equate to ten thousand dollar grant. Thirteen Scott County businesses have received grants and they probably touched in everybody's district here. Haven't got a district map, but I would say there's one in every.
Is that the last year?
No, this is overall with B CDA. That's apparently a new program. It's probably only five or six years old.
I guess that was a little bit in the last five or six.
And that's regionally competitive. So that's seven counties you're talking about that they're giving C cap of grants out to. And if they work with Small Business Development Center, whose services are free, they provide those free to small businesses, then they can get the business plan, help with the financials and things like that. That's what Small Business Development Center does. Then we also have the Rural Business Enterprise Grant Program, grant to the Scott County EDA. This is money that we can use to loan out to businesses and we can loan up to two hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars. So thirty loans have been approved to date. We have five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that has been out there working. Some of that has revolved back. It's called revolving loans. When we get it back, so we can reloan it. Right now, we're currently down and we don't have a lot of money to loan out. So we have reapplied to Rural Development for additional funding so we can get more funding from the small business. And we hope to hear from that really soon. We haven't heard yet. So we have four tourism-related, eighteen retail, and eight support businesses that have received a loan from this program. And then we, of course, we have website, marketing, and all that. That's part of our marketing that we pass around. We've had three prospect visits and we continue to follow up with all those existing leads. B CDA is helping us market the Teletag building. And they've had a couple of people that have shown interest, but nobody has taken interest in it. So we continue to market with B CDA, with V E D P, and with Invest Southwest Virginia and the RIFA. So it's all working. Get any questions?
Good presentation. Send our regards to your dad and your family. Prayers for your family. I get asked the question, you know, a lot of times. And I know you went through a lot. You had a good presentation. And people are asking the question, why we're not being able to get, you know, businesses in our county? And if you could do a little summary of how that process works and what you're doing to let our people know what the EDA is doing. And you shared a lot of information here. It's not as simple as picking up the phone as in the old days. You know, hey, we got a place here in Scott County. So if you can just kind of let us know how that works and how effective it is.
Yeah, the process is a little bit different. And manufacturing, of course, the process would be, you know, a lot of those leads, they would either come from the state or the regional. We do get some local leads and we work all those leads. So if we get a lead for some type of project that's going to create jobs, we work every lead. Every lead will result into somebody located here. Retail's a different story. Retail, they know more about you even before they come here. So Little Caesar's already knew the traffic count that was coming through Weber City, for example. And McDonald's already knew the traffic count that was coming on twenty-three in through Gate City. So retail is a little bit different. So we continue to work the retail, but most of the time that is they will come to us for a specific question. And they've come, you know, like the Dollar Generals have asked this question before, that located county. The Little Caesar's even and McDonald's, all of those have come to us and asked this question. So we may be on the front end or helping or working with David, you know, sometimes for per head. Or they call us first, we'll tell them to call David. So we're kind of the first person sometimes that they call. So you won't see us a lot. You'll see us behind the scenes on some of those instead of out front.
How about manufacturing?
Manufacturing, we continue to try to get manufacturing in the area. Now, the issue with Scott County is the industrial park is full. And most of those people that are looking now are looking for an existing building. We don't have an existing building. We have a site that we could actually put an industrial client on. But we've had success, eighty to ninety percent, I think it's around eighty-two percent or so of your manufacturing projects are going to come from existing businesses. So we've had success with working with our existing businesses and increasing the manufacturing presence. Now, we still will market the manufacturing network.
Okay, one last question on Riverside. You know, a lot of folks, you know, keep asking, you know, we've had the Teletag, you know, that was there. And we know, you know, what's happened with that. So what's your vision for Riverside?
I think getting the masquerade in plan will help us. We want, one, to get another tenant in the facility for sure. That's, you know, corporate. We want to get that accomplished. We also want to develop another site because right now we don't have another site to it. So another company might move in there. See, the reason that Teletag moved there is because that site was developed. And then when we're later on, we're able to get the road. So with the county's investment of around two million dollars, we've been able to get another seven million dollars for that site, for roads, infrastructure, everything else.
How does that come into play with, you know, you go to Richmond, you know, quite often, the recruitment, you know, comes through. Can you share with us how the recruiting aspect works, you know, coming through?
Yes, the state. The way the state works is we would post the building on their website. Then that lead would come to them sometimes. Sometimes it comes through B CDA. They don't always go to the state. So the state would work with the region. The region would work with the locality. So that's kind of how the leads work. But again, it could come from the Virginia Cokeville Economic Authority. It could come from Invest Southwest Virginia. We've had a lead from them. And in Duffield, it could come from TBA. So there's a lot of people that, you know, are looking after us, helping us get leads.
Very good. Appreciate all that you do. And a lot of folks really don't know how hard that you do work. And I know that you're very knowledgeable about, you know, what you do. And appreciate you answering my questions and other folks' may have questions. I think the EDA is a very, very, very important role, you know, in our county. You know, that with tourism and all of that, that helps, you know, creates jobs, revenue and things like that, you know, for our county. So that's, you know, it's really very important. So thank you.
I can do that without any.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Good presentation.
John, you talked about a new site. I know you put it out for bid and it came back way above what money you had. Is going back out for another bid on that site?
We would want to do that if we have the money. So we will apply for the money and hopefully we'll have additional money from one of these agencies that Leno Whisco's helped us with. And there are money, there are additional money coming through the Economic Development Administration, through the federal. There may be some state money too. So we're going to work with those entities because we're not the only ones that have sites or site shortages or building shortages. It's all over there, Southwest Virginia. So we've got to find additional sites and then later on, we might decide if we need a building.
You already have that money, so much money, don't you, for the site?
Right. We have five hundred thousand to bank commission and three hundred thousand for B CDA. But remember, the masquerade's funding is coming out of that. So we'll probably have about half that left. So we need to, you know, get additional funding to reach the first bid. I think we're a little over two million. So we need to figure out, you know, to try to get over that, to make sure we have that money.
What about these loans that y'all have? If those aren't paid back, who's responsible for those?
The loan is, of course, you're talking about the building on the loan, the loan on the building for T-Tech. And B CDA, of course, we do owe that money, but they will look to try to get another prospect in there. So that company can make the payment on the loan. So they would work with us like they do any other project to make sure we get another company in there so they can make the payments.
And the loans that you give these small businesses, if they're not paid back, who's responsible for them?
We work with them and try to get them to pay back all we can. Most of those, the majority do pay back. And then we can just loan that money back out. So we try to get, and they're a little bit higher risk loans, higher risk than the bank would do. But we do all we can to get that funding back so we can, or we tell them, you know, we want to relend that money to somebody else. If they don't pay us, then we can't relend it to another business.
Do we stand a chance to get our money back at that OLP plant, Dugan, at two hundred and fifty thousand? Do we stand a chance to get any of that back?
Well, that's up to the court now. I mean, there'll be some restitution hopefully in the future. And then we hopefully can stand to get some of that back. I don't know right now how much that'll be. I mean, it's up to them to decide and work through that process.
I seen in the paper where he pleaded guilty to charges.
Right.
Something I didn't understand is if you pay back the hundred dollars a month, I think that'd have to be a misprint. Seven hundred thousand dollars, a hundred dollars a month, I don't think you live long enough to.
That's only until they work out the details. The attorneys are not meant to work out the details. So they probably set it at a hundred dollars a month. And then at a certain time period, then they'll set it larger amount.
I'm hoping if he, a hundred dollars a month, I said, I think you'd live long enough to pay it back.
Yeah, but you got to give the attorney the chance to do their work and get this out. Of course, it's Commonwealth Attorney. So he can set this up.
Anything else for Mr. Kilgore? Are you going into closed session with us in a few minutes?
Yep, up to you. If you invite me, I'll come in.
Well, the reason we're going in is, so we'll, we'll be going to closed session in a little bit.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. Anything else before we do our comments and then we'll be going to closed session? So anything before we do that? All right, Mr. Jeter, anything for you?
Yeah, you know, we talked about the cigarette tax way back. Well, I think the Weber City and Gate City has already implemented cigarette tax. Gate City's is four dollars a carton. Weber City's is two dollars a carton. I didn't know where we was going to pursue for the county or not. But that's when the two towns is getting the cigarette tax. And the people outside the town, it's really hurting the people in the towns. Because you're not going to buy cigarettes here. You can drive half a mile and buy them without. So I didn't know where we was still interested in or not. Evidently, the towns jumped on it real quick. They must have heard we was considering it. So they jumped on.
Wasn't that in the budget?
The towns have had the opportunity to have cigarette tax and bills tax for a long time. The counties just got that authority last year. And cigarette tax could only be incorporated July first this year, I believe. So we're looking at a regional approach with the cigarette tax with the Leno Whisco counties. So I have still been involved in discussions with getting that set up. As far as how the towns got that done so quick, I'm not sure. But it seems like a long process. We did talk about it during the budget. Because you have to have the stickers that you have to get to the distributors. They have to put them on every pack of cigarettes that go to the store. I'm not sure. And then you have to know how you're going to collect those taxes. So I'm not sure how the towns' process works.
I don't know. It's just a business I brought it up to me.
Did they have public hearings and all that stuff? I mean, they'd have to do that within salary to do it. I wonder the same thing, how they did it so quick. But the regional approach we discussed is what they're, I think it's the best way to go about it. Because it's going to be expensive to put a sticker on every pack of cigarettes, get that done. The regional sticker of some sort would be the best way to go.
Well, now, if we decide to do it, we probably have to exempt the towns that's already done it.
That's how much we put on it?
And put another tax on top of that. It would be double taxing the towns, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the ten packs on a carton, that'd be about forty cents a pack, I guess.
That's correct. So Gate Cities was four dollars a carton is what the tax ended up being.
That's the most you can do.
Would our tax be in the towns? I think it would just be in the county.
But anyway, I don't know where we're standing with the other counties. With Leno Whisco group, done it. Because that's the regional.
Dwayne has been having conversation with the county administrators, but as far as them overseeing it, we might not know more.
All right, anything else there?
That's all.
Mitch Tipton?
Yeah, yes, I've got calls of rivers. The trash trucks that come from Hiltons and from above there on Highway fifty-eight. Where they have trash on top of the truck some kind of way and it's going down the road. And I've seen it afterwards. There's a lot of debris that's been blown from the top of the truck onto the side of the highways. So how can, how can that be stopped?
They look at the trucks as they leave the lot and to see if there are any trash on top. I can reiterate to the guys to make sure that that's, that's being looked at.
Okay, appreciate it.
And the door doesn't close completely on the top of those trash trucks. And I also, I don't think packer trucks are necessarily designed to be traveling highways. They're more designed for like city routes and things like that. So they're not as our type as they can be up there. But we might be able to look at some options of our, if some rubber flanks or something. If the dumpsters are overfilled, a lot of people will fall up. You know, the aisles will fall off the floor at the tip of one, the dump. So that creates that problem a lot more. And for some reason, people will keep falling into the same dumpster. They'll fall on top of full dumpster with an empty one beside of it for some reason. But I'll talk with the guys.
Thank you. Thank all the staff for what you're doing. And Mike, good to see you again today via Skype. And then hopefully we'll be able to see you next month in person, maybe. Lord willing. That's all I have.
Mr. Aaron?
Appreciate what everybody's doing. Just got a couple of things. I had a call, it's been several months ago now, and I talked with Jackie Christian about it, about a tree being cut. It's, I'm guessing it's on the state right away. It might not be. I don't know. I've tried. I've looked at it again. But I did get in contact with him again and they were supposed to have gotten contact with the environmental people and do some sort of study on it or something. I don't know. But it's, it's a, it's a tree that's right on the road. If it falls, of course, it's going to block the road, sort of in two curves. Somebody could hit it if it did fall right beside of a creek. So it's easy for it to fall, but the main concern. So it's easy for it to fall, but the main concern that the person had it, it's going to fall on their house. So, you know, if there was any way that V Dot can cut this tree and get it out of the way, we need to do that. The address that the tree's at is seven twenty-nine Snowflake Road. But they, I don't know, I've not heard anything back from whether the environmental people decided whether they could cut it or not, I don't know. But anyway. It's something I asked the board last month about the raises for the county. I don't know if you've thought anymore about that, but I still believe we should try to do that. You know, and I don't know how hard it is to amend the budget. Maybe it's, that's a hard thing to do, I don't know. And maybe it's best to wait till next year. I'd hate to do that because we've put it off and put it off. You know, cost of living is going, will continue to go up. You know, and they, just, just because they've, they've sort of got used to not getting that raise, I don't think we should use that as an excuse. You know, we, we should do everything that, that, that we can. If my memory serves me right, that's going to cost about seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars to give the county raises. But that's, that's something I'd like for you to consider again. And if you don't want to talk about it today, we'll wait till next, next meeting, but that's up to you. But anyway, appreciate what everybody's doing and hope, thank God for the rain. You know, and a lot of the farmers were getting pretty discouraged. It's one of the worst times that I ever saw, but on my pasture and stuff. But anyway, thank you for all, all your doing.
Thank you. Mr. Brick, do you have anything?
I do. One thing that's not being mixed, and I was curious about it because I'm kind of confused, the convenience center that's going to be placed in Monson Gap, Freida, is that across from where the old center was and is it at the Scott County Motel where that was set? Is that where it is?
No, sir. It would be over next to Hilton Road on that side of the V Dot property.
Okay. What I read said it was across from the old side and I, that would not be a good place, I don't think, for it, so I'm glad to hear that. I want to, I want to thank Freida, Sally, Bill, Amy and Tina and all the support staff and supervisors. I want to say a word about you. I know how hard it is to go through this, how much work you put into it. And I really appreciate you. I'm hoping next month that I can be there. I've had some good news since last week. I found a specialist in Kingsport who had transferred from Vanderbilt Hospital. And I went to see her. She consulted with a friend of hers that talks in the nation on, on the disease I've got. To make a long story short, on, went last Wednesday, I could not pick my feet off the floor. On Thursday, I'm sorry, on Thursday, I went for an I V, it's I V I G for seven hours. Within twenty-four hours, after that seven hour I V, I walked on water. So it's, it's really a miracle drug. I take it once a month and I'm doing water therapy, which I'd never heard of before. Then I'm doing water therapy and then this I V. So I hope to be with you next, next month. But I do appreciate all of it. I really do. Thank you very much.
You're an inspiration to all of us, Mike. You really are. All right. Thanks for, Mr. Hood, do you have anything?
Glad to hear the good report from Mike. And I'd like to thank Freida and Sally for helping me out with a tax question that one of the District Six residents had. And thank Freida for helping me out with the V Dot private road question. And I'd like to thank Bill for sending to a safety concern I had at the Duffield Waste Management Site. So you've been really helpful this past month and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Grubbe?
I do want to say thank you to all the staff. I appreciate everything you all do. Great presentation, John. It's great because there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes in your specific situation that everybody just assumes we can just throw businesses up here and there. And that's not how it works. And there's a, there's a disconnect with people and educating themselves on the workings, the inner workings of the county and how that, how that works. I do want to say that, you know, I did get an email this couple of weeks back, I guess, about the Scott County Board of Supervisors, how we were funding the parking lot at the down through Gate City, Webber City area. I do want to say that we did not do that. We do not have a say in what V Dot does or does not do throughout situations like that. That's been on their plan for a while. None of, no local money went toward funding that, that I know of or that I'm aware of. So that's not something that your tax dollars has paid for, your local tax dollars has paid for, no, your state tax dollars probably have because V Dot does that, not, not your local Board of Supervisors. We don't have a whole lot of control over any of that stuff with V Dot. They pick and choose and then, you know. I do want to say that if you have a road issue, there's a way that we go about putting those requests in and it's the same as for anybody else in the county. It's the same situation, it's the same process that you have the, you have the ability to do. You can go onto the website, put in a road, you know, go through the whole process of, you know, naming the road, telling what the issue is. If you call me about a road issue, that's exactly what I'm going to do. It's the same situation. So you have that ability too. And last but not least, I always want to make sure that we do not forget to speak about the treasurer's office and the tax collections. I do want to say that Danny and I met with her after the meeting and, that we had last time and encouraged her to, encourage the treasurer to, you know, ensure that we do these tax collections. And the response we got was she's not going to be a hardcore tax collector. Those were her words, not mine. And we don't have, this board has no authority to enforce that. So all we can do is ask her to do her job, which I would encourage all of the citizens of the Scott County to encourage your treasurer to do her job. That's what I would suggest. Encourage, encourage, encourage. That's the only opportunity we have with that. I pay my taxes, you pay your taxes. We're getting ready to go through this tax assessment and just like Mr. Carter said earlier, what good is it going to do if we can't get these taxes collected now to raise taxes to ensure that we're, you know, going, not still in that same situation? So I do want to say that, you know, encourage, call your treasurer, encourage her to do her job. And that is all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. And we did meet with the treasurer's office and I was disappointed in some of the comments that was made. Said she'd never be back for this board again. That's fine, that's her choice. But not to be a hardcore tax collector, I think you need to be hardcore. You've got to be pretty tough skinned to do that job. And so hopefully she will, that we won't have the continuing issues that we've had since two thousand twelve. On another note, Ms. Aronson and I met with the school board. We did a FOIA request to the school board about the numbers of kids coming to our county schools, out of state and out of county. They gave us those numbers, I think we need to sit on for now. I have the numbers. Our county attorney went through the zip codes and seen where they were from and we just need to sit on it right now. The reason being, they're dealing with a lot with COVID, trying to keep the schools operating. They don't need us breathing down their neck over this. Something where they've got to deal with it. They really do. I talked to Mr. Ferguson, I told him my thoughts. Yeah, we have the numbers. He wanted to know what they were. I told him, he probably already knew, but what the numbers are. I did an interview with the local TV station, I said a hun, no, it's four hundred. I was wrong. Charnell School Board said a hundred. He was way wrong on his numbers. Anyway, let's just sit on it for now and we did get the numbers we asked for. They gave us zip codes, what they did. Some of the county, out of county numbers may not be exactly right because there is some people living in the county that may have a Russell County address or Lee County address that lived in the county. So, but the out of state numbers was, was dead on, I think, as far as those zip codes that they gave us. So anyway, for now, we need to sit on that and hopefully they can get through this COVID stuff and pray for them because they're having time with this epidemic, a new beginning of it. I don't know where it's going to go, the quarantine, the football teams, the, they're having some issues with all of that, trying to get the ball games played and so they don't need us on them right now. And I even told Mr. Ferguson that. So anyway, we'll sit on it for now until they try to figure out what they're going to do with the schools, keep them operating with the environment they're, they're in. So anyway, thank the staff, Freddie, all of you, Amy, all of you, Dana, Bill, y'all do a great job. Sally, y'all really do. Y'all do a wonderful job here in this county. We're blessed to have you. Anything else before we go into closed session? We have two things to go in for, so we need a motion to go in to closed session.
I'll move.
Mr. Jeter made a motion and we have a second.
I'll second.
Given a second, it's for hereby entering to closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one, A one being personnel and eight point five prospective industry. All in favor, vote say aye. Aye opposed? So with that, we will be going to the closed session.